All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Community Development Commission. Today is Wednesday, September 27, 2023. Bianca, would you please take role?
Commissioner Covington?
Here.
Commissioner? Uh, Le?
Yeah.
Commissioner Martinez? Commissioner Padilla? Commissioner Cornelius?
Present.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Present.
Okay, seeing your quorum, this meeting is now officially called to order. Would you please rise with the pledge of allegiance? And Daniel, you have the honors. Thank you. We have any public comments, Bianca? No. They will move on then to the consent calendar. This is the time for the commission to consider matters under the consent calendar item number one. Do I have a motion to consider the item?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The matter is approved by unanimous consent. We'll now move on to the business calendar. We will now consider matters under the business calendar. The first item on the business calendar is item number two. To authorize issuance of the fiscal year 2023, 2024, requests for proposals for affordable home ownership opportunities. To approve an update to the down payment assistance program guidelines and to allocate additional funds to down payment assistance. Staff, will you please make your presentation?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The agenda may seem light today, but this is one of the most substantive and important initiatives that we have brought forward in the last two years. The last time we brought forward such a large initiative such as this was in December 2021. So we are very excited about today's item. And I would like, it's my privilege to introduce Mr. Salo Amesquita, our community development analyst, who will be providing today's presentation.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Just some introduction, this is actually my first time in this type of setting. So one of the things that I have is I always use my hands and I tend to speed through the presentation. So if you need me to slow down, please don't hesitate to stop me.
Welcome, Salo, back yourself at home.
Thank you, thank you. As you can see, we have a fiscal year 2023, 24 homeownership initiative. Believe it or not, this is one of a subject matter that I have passion for. I believe there was two things that I've done in my career working for civil services. One is helping under the Section 8 program, and I enjoy helping families. But this is actually an opportunity to provide families with the stability to own the house. And that's why this is such an important subject matter for me. Today, we're here asking for your approval for the following recommendation, recommend, recommended actions. First, uh, I'm sorry. Use the clicker. Item number one, we are seeking your approval to authorize the city manager to issue a fiscal year 2023, 24, request for proposal for affordable homeownership opportunities. Number two, we are seeking your approval to authorize the city manager to update the city down payment assistance program. And number three, we are seeking your approval to make adjustments to recognize and allocate additional funds for the down payment assistance program. Let's travel back in time to get a better understanding of this subject matter. Over the last 10 years, the city of Santa Ana has approved funding for the development of 950 new units for affordable housing. Based on his success, the city exceeded its housing goals by over 2,400% in the last regional housing needs assessment cycle and has met more than 52% goals of the current cycle. Santa Ana also decreased homelessness by 44% from 2019 to 2022. However, we've done a lot of affordable housing. We did a total of 950 affordable housing units, only eight units for affordable homeownership opportunities. That's only 1%. So we are here to increase the number, and that's actually our goal today. Giving you more perspective on the background of affordable housing, we have three amazing new projects. If you're taking the time to drive through the city of Santa Ana, we have the Westview Affordable Housing Project. And that's going to bring a total of 84, 90, 84 units of affordable housing for large families. Crossroads at Washington is going to bring a total of 85 units of affordable housing for large families. And then we have recently Wise Place Permanent Supportive Housing, that's going to be a total of 47 permanent housing units. That's a total of 216 rental units created to house Santa Ana families. We want to take the next step forward by providing homeownership opportunities for our families. So we are seeking your approval to allocate a total of $10 million in affordable housing funds exclusively for homeownership opportunities. This is actually the largest one-time investment in affordable homeownership in the city of Santa Ana for the last 10 years. We're actually here to make history. We are here to make history and make more family, provide families in more stable living conditions. As you can see on the breakdown, we have a total of $7.7 million for new affordable homeownership opportunities. And we're actually seeking $2.3 million for down payment assistance. So the question is, why is homeownership so important for Santa Ana families? And homeownerships, and I'm sorry, I'm dealing with creates generational wealth. I've been in, I've been in, sitting down in this setting, and we keep hearing the word generational wealth for multiple individuals. This is the opportunity to start doing that. We're moving from a, from just two simple words to actually making it a reality for our families. It's going to bring stability and security, economic development, long-term financial planning, and a sense of belonging. And before I go on with this subject matter, I have, I have a couple of stories, and they will, will actually prove this point. In 1999, I graduated from, I graduated from Valencia High School in the city of Placencia in 1995. In 1999, we were renting an apartment. In 1999, I actually pressed the issue to my dad, and I said, Dad, it's time for us to start buying property, to start buying the house. We had been renting for, I arrived to the United States in 93, so quite a few years, living in an apartment. And I pressed that issue, and my dad goes, no, no, I'm planning to go back to Guatemala. And that's actually the mentality that a lot of our citizens have. They come to the US and they have the mentality that they're going to go back to their native country. But 47 years later, my parents are still living in that property in the city of Anaheim. Because why? It brought a stability to them. In 20, about 22 years ago, I got married, and the first thing that I said was, we need to buy a house. So I actually attended the, I had the opportunity to attend Neighborhood Works of Orange County, which is one of our partners. And I took the class. And immediately after taking the class, I was able to buy a house for my family. 22 years later, we're still in that house. And my son, who was raised in that three-bedroom townhome, is now thinking of doing the same thing, buying a house. Why do I bring this point to the table? We come to the, we come to the United States, and we have the mentality that we're going to go back to our native countries. But the reality is that we tend to stay here, because this is our home. And this is a great opportunity for us to help our Santa Ana residents with the opportunity to give them generational wealth, stability that we need to raise our families, security for our families, economic development. Don't, don't ask me, but I look at the amount of money that I spent buying my townhome and how much that townhome is worth right now, and it's amazing. That's more than what we can have in a savings account. So the sense of long-term financial planning and the sense of belonging. Because now we're not going to be renting, moving from one place to another one. We're going to be stable in one location. And that's what we're trying to do today. So that's the opportunity that each of you have today to make history with CDA. That's not the end, okay? I still have one. Thank you, thank you. I think I'm going to do that better, do you mind? Thanks. So under the RFP, under Section 3 of the Affordable Housing Funds Policy and Procedures amended by City Council on August 18, 2020, the Community Development Agency upon City Council approval will issue a request for proposal for available funds. Staff is requesting your authorization to release the fiscal year 23, 24, request for proposals for affordable homeownership opportunities. The available funds for this RFP includes funds available from the Home Investment Partnership Program, and as you can see, $7.7 million. This will also give us the opportunity to, to create new construction. This is actually the fourth time that we, this, this property is available for homeownership, and it's a 2101 North Spurgeon Street, and it will be included in the RFP. The RFP issuance date will be October 18, 2023. The first deadline will be December 15, 2023, and the second deadline will be Monday, April 1st, 2024. The review panel will include at least one employee from the City of Santa Ana Public Works Agency, Planning and Building Agency, and Community Development Agency, and one outside agency or government entity. The review panel will use the proposal scoring and selection criteria from the RFP to conduct the review and analysis of each proposal. The scoring and selection criteria includes additional points for projects that will serve veterans, and we have, we have two in this, in this room. Teachers, that we need to bring more teachers in our communities. We did one, one, I see a lot of teachers coming from other cities to teach in Santa Ana, when we can provide that opportunity for them to stay local, and first responders. Any proposals recommended for the award of funds will be first, will first come to the Community Development Commission for your consideration. And we estimate that this investment could provide affordable homeownership opportunities for 22 families. And since we, we did some amendments to, to our first time home program guidelines, and as you can see, what we actually increased. We actually increased, give me one second. We actually were, were able to assist 22 families already. Using inclusionary loans, we closed a total of nine loans. Seven families benefited with $80,000 from our first time, first time down payment assistance, and two families received $120,000. Twelve families benefited from the CDBG loans are receiving $120,000 as a down payment for their first time home buyers assistance program. So we're seeking to update our down payment assistance program. The first update to the program is for the, for the city's high school loan forgiveness incentive. Currently, the incentive is in that prospect, is that prospective buyers who graduated from high school located in the city and have a four-year college degree are eligible for loan forgiveness. Under the loan forgiveness incentive, then $10,000 will be forgiven every five years over a 20-year period up to a maximum of $40,000 savings. Staff is recommending an update to the prospective home buyers who also had a Santa Ana address while attending any high school and have a four-year college degree are eligible for this loan forgiveness incentive, and we cannot forget those who serve. Staff is also recommending that the US military veterans and active-duty military will be eligible for the loan forgiveness incentive of $40,000. A second update to the program will be to increase that maximum debt-to-income ratio. Currently, the program allows a maximum debt-to-income ratio of 38 to 43%, which in today's lending market is considered conservative. This means that the buyer, the buyer's prospective mortgage payment cannot exceed 38% of the household gross monthly income, and that all of the households' monthly debt payments, inclusive of the prospective, prospective mortgage payments, cannot exceed 43% of their gross monthly income. This ratio will ensure that the buyers, this ratio ensures that a buyer is not paying an excessive amount of their income towards their mortgage and other debt payments, which will increase the risk of foreclosure. Current, staff is proposing to increase the maximum debt-to-income ratio to 40, 45% to align with today's underwriting standards and lower the barriers for families. With these two updates, staff is, we are confident that more home buyers will be able to qualify for the down payment assistance program. In addition to these two updates, we are going to take an aggressive marketing approach to inform residents of an amazing program. It's interesting, and I have a story for you guys here. I took over this position two days ago. And first time home buyers program is something that I have passion for. And I was talking to a city employee about the first time home buyers program, and he's been here for over two years, and he didn't know we have such a, such an amazing program. So it's time for us to start changing that. We need to promote the program first to our city employees who do so much for our citizens. Why not keep them here in the city of Santa Ana? So we need to take an aggressive approach. So the idea is to promote to city employees. The idea is to promote to the county employees, and the idea is to reach out to the school district. And today, I had the opportunity to speak to Velma. And Velma is basically saying, we need to also talk to the employers. We need to take this program and do an aggressive marketing so people can take advantage of this amazing opportunity. Next. So with marketing in mind, I'm not going to read through the whole process. But we're, we're going to do aggressive marketing, social media, mass mailings to Santa Ana residents, and global emails to city employees, Santa Ana Unified School District employees, and county employees. Our marketing material is actually, next please. Our marketing material is done in three languages, Spanish, English, and Vietnamese. And if there is need for more languages, we can also do that. We, we want to bring this idea to families that reside in our cities. In addition, we live in a high-tech society, so we're going to be adding QR codes so the families can access this information directly from their cell phones. Next. Traditional funds for this program, on May 2nd, 2023, City Council approved 300,000 in CDBG program funds for the down payment assistance for fiscal year 23, 24. In addition to the, in addition, the city has $410,000 remaining in inclusionary funding, funds that were allocated by the City Council on November 2nd, 2022, 21. The staff is now seeking approval to allocate an additional 2.2 million by recognizing the appropriation of $762,000 in car home programs, reuse funds, and 1.5 million in inclusionary housing funds. At the beginning, I says that this, this was going to be the biggest change we have done to this program. And our goal is to allocate $3 million for down payment assistance to help our families. That's right, that's right, you can say that. In conclusion, we are here to discuss the RFP, changes to our existing down payment assistance program, discussion of the use of $10 million. But in reality, we are here to discuss on the future of approximately 52 families in the city of Santa Ana. We, in the Community Development Agency, dream of assisting 52 families who are currently renting. We dream of giving them the opportunity to become homeowners. We need your blessing to make the CDA dream a long-lasting reality for Santa Ana families. Oh, I'm sorry, my mistake. And as you can see, these are three successful, three families that came through our program. The Sanchez-Rio family, I actually had the opportunity to do the inspection for that family. They are moving in an amazing two-bedroom, two-bedroom unit, hardwood floors, amazing views from every window. They were extremely happy when they moved into the house. I did not work with Nina Lee, but as you can see, we're given the opportunity to a family and a single mom and their child, a child, to have a stability in the community of Santa Ana. And then we have the Rosales family, and I like that quote, and this is from a letter that they sent over to us. We were fortunate, fortunate enough to hear about this program and can only hope others out there can benefit, benefit from, from it like we did, the Rosales family. Once again, we need your support to make these dreams a reality. I'm here for any questions, thank you.
Questions, commissioners?
Some forgiveness?
If I remember correctly from my notes, I think for every five years that they live there as their primary residence, 10,000 could be forgiven for a maximum of 40?
Yes. That's it. That answer is okay? Good.
Commissioner Cornelius, can you see your eyes, something spinning there?
No, no, I have no questions.
No questions, okay. I saw an active mindset there.
See, I like when there is no questions, because I get to go back.
Commissioner Lee, any questions?
Can you talk more about the homeownership program, opportunity program, like how does it work to the public?
So yes, I may, I may need some help. The families, they actually need to qualify for a first-time loan. Once they, once they are approved for a first-time loan, they actually send that information over to us to analyze it. And once we, we collect the data, bank statements, family composition, income, we make an analysis to see if they qualify for the $80,000 or $120,000. Then we do an inspection, because we have to ensure that it's a viable investment for the family and for the city. You have to understand that the city is putting money, 80,000 to $120,000. So we need to make sure it's a viable investment for both. And then we sign loan docs and judson, I don't even add that.
We've got it, the only thing I'd add is that the $80,000 is for moderate-income families, and that comes from our inclusionary housing fund. And the $120,000 is for low-income families, and that comes from our CDBG program fund. We do have those tiers so that we can serve families who need more assistance.
Follow-up question, so how, how long does the, you know, the homeowner have to be in the home for? Or like, is the, is the, like, when they sell, they have to sell back with the city? For the property, why? They purchased a property to?
They, they sign loan agreements, and it is my understanding, and I may need your help here. And if I'm not able to answer your question, I can always go back and get back to you via email. We signed the loan agreements, and I believe that in the, it's either 45 to 55 years that they're supposed to stay at the property. In the, if they decide to sell the property before that time, they have to actually get in touch with the city, because we, our loan is a second silent on the, on the property. So they have to inform us, and then we, we started the process to, to allow them to sell. But there is some funding that we collect, and I can get you the specifics via email.
I have, I have a few more, but you know that. So, you know, right now, I'm going to send this program before a homeowner want to purchase a home, and you know, they want to, we have the house, or they want to view something, and we can apply for the homeownership?
This will be for first-time home buyers, so if they're building, it's a different story. This is just for a family who has not purchased a property in the city before, anywhere, and then we provide the assistance for them to become homeowners.
I was, I saw somewhere in here, say something about purchase, and we have, we have a really daily.
It's true, and I can review my notes, but it's strictly for, to purchase.
I want to go ahead and clarify a point there, and I'll come back to Commissioner Lee. You said first-time home buyers, but I read also that they had, they had not owned a property in the last three years, they are considered as first-time home buyers.
You're, you are right. Like I said, I only took this job two days ago.
Yeah, I mean, it's right here, to purchase, and basically, development loan, so I'm curious on that.
Do you have the, the page number?
Page four on the packet.
Are you talking, are you referring to the RFP?
So that's why I looked at it, that's the same.
Yeah, the, so the RFP is for experienced affordable housing developers to acquire a property or rehabilitate a property or build new for homeownership opportunities.
So at the developer, when we purchase the property, you know, how do we process it with the city? You know, like, do we have to work with the city to identify that a lot?
Well, well, first and foremost is the, the experience of the developer. The, the minimum experience of a developer is at least five years, so they do have to meet the experience requirements. And if they, if they do meet that experience requirement, then, then obviously, they would submit a proposal for consideration by the city. It's a very methodic, very, you know, very outlined process, a very step-by-step process that, where the proposals are submitted before the deadline, and then the city then conducts a minimum threshold review of those proposals, makes sure that developer meets all the, the experience requirements, and everything in their proposal is complete. And then we form a review panel that would then interview the developer regarding their proposal to the city. And then following our, our interviews, if the review panel is, is ready to recommend an award, then we would conduct our own preliminary financial gap analysis, our preliminary underwriting to ensure, to verify and double-check the developer's numbers, essentially re-engineer what they're communicating to us, that we're, we're verifying all of their numbers are correct and accurate. And then after that review is complete, then, then the developer would come and present their proposal to you for consideration.
Well, I have two follow-up questions for that. As far as developer-wise, do they have to be a nonprofit, or can it be privately developed?
You'll see in the, in the RFP that the developer must have a minimum of five years recent experience in developing affordable housing, housing projects. And there is not a, not a requirement that they be a nonprofit, so they could be, they could be a private, private market developer with that experience requirement or a nonprofit.
So the first question would be, is this allowed to be open up for partnership, you know, between a nonprofit with a experienced developer that they want to get into affordable housing development?
Yeah, we, we, we have seen that before. So we've seen experienced rental housing developers partner with nonprofits, like community development partners, partners with Mercy House, for example. And we've, we've seen other types of partnerships such as that.
Thank you.
Oh, you did a great job.
Thank you.
I've been helping people get into homeownership now for almost 40 years, and I agree with all the benefits that you explained, but you left out one. But you could see it in your eyes, and that's the pride of ownership, of being a homeowner, and all the benefits that brings to the family for generations to come. So very much a proponent of homeownership. I think of the fact that we built 950 affordable housing units over the last 10 years and exceeded our goals by 2,400%. I don't know of any other city in this county of Orange that's come close to that. So that, I think, has been a great job here by the city and by this department, and you guys have done a great job, and I recognize that. I respect that. I have a question though about the first property you showed up, I read about that there in the information on Spurgeon, where that, I saw where it bordered the freeway, okay? And I saw where it's 27,800 plus square feet, Zoned R1. Is there a way we could do something with that parcel and still give easement access and maybe subdivide it so we could build more affordable housing?
A great, great question. So, so this, this is- this, this is the fourth time that we've made this, uh, this parcel available for affordable housing development. Um, the first time we made it available was back in June, two thousand eighteen. And, uh, we received one proposal that year, uh, from, uh, from a developer who didn't have, didn't have any experience in affordable housing development and didn't get through our minimum threshold review. Uh, but, uh, the following year, uh, we, um, made it available again. And then the third year, we, uh, we were more proactive to try and encourage, uh, organizations such as Habitat for Humanity to come in and, and, uh, you know, propose a development on that site. Uh, Habitat, you know, evaluated to due diligence and determined that they would not, they weren't able to, to develop a site on, develop, uh, develop homes on that site at that time, under that executive director, maybe that opinion has changed. Uh, but now with this fourth time, we are, um, you know, we are looking for creative solutions to develop, uh, affordable homeownership opportunities on that site. We're hopeful that Habitat for Humanity will consider looking at it again or, and other developers will consider looking at it again. Um, we're generally concerned about the, um, the surrounding support from the, from the neighborhood. So we're, we're, um, we were considering including a requirement that the developer would have to get a letter of support from the neighborhood association. And that was, that was something we decided to not include in the RFP. But to get to your, to get to answer your question, uh, uh, we are interested in creative solutions to develop this site into affordable homeownership opportunities. If we're not successful, then our, our plan is to, uh, is to turn around and, uh, I ideally sell the site and use those funds elsewhere for development, affordable, uh, opportunities elsewhere throughout the city.
Got it. Understood. It's just that billable parcels becoming so rare here in Orange County, that if we can do something to make it a little easier for the developer, a little better access, a little better maybe zoning, so they can get more units in there. I would say that'd be a great direction there. Um, very much support the forgiveness program for vets. There are two veterans on this commission and I'm sure Commissioner Cornelius would agree with me that that would be a nice option to, uh, to include there, the forgiveness program for a vet. Whether they went to high school here in Santa Ana, whether they went and got a four-year degree or not, I would love to see that, that benefit for veterans. As far as increasing the ratios from where they were to forty, forty-five, that's pretty much the industry standard right now. So you'll gain, I think, a few more people able to afford, uh, to, to carry forward and do this program. Um, the one thing I saw that I disagreed with though is that it had to be a fixed rate. Had to be a fixed interest rate. Today's rates are up there above seven, getting closer to seven and a half and may go up even higher. There are some excellent, and I never would have agreed with this years ago, but there are some excellent adjustable programs where the rates are locked in at a lower rate for five years, seven, ten years. So it gives them time to kind of watch the market and refinance when things with inflation come down a little bit, which bring the rates down a little bit. I think as we get closer to the election next year, rates will come down again. So it gives people, I think, an opportunity. So I don't know if we can open that up a little bit there, Judson, but it's just a comment I wanted to make.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, there is a, there is a, a long history be, between keeping, only allowing a fixed rate. Um, but, um, we'd be happy to schedule a meeting with you to discuss that further. Um, particularly before we bring it to city council, uh, to see if that's something that, uh, that, that you and the city council would like to change.
I, I'd be happy to, to make that meeting, but either my Commissioners would like to join me. That'd be it. But being in the market every time it goes up, a quarter point, a half point, wherever it is, we're losing the affordability for a lot of consumers. So if we have the option to lock in on an adjustable or lower fixed rate to give them time to get into homeownership, enjoy the benefits of homeownership, get more stable there with their income, get a better equity position. And when the time comes, the rates do fall, they can always do a refinance and lock it in for a thirty-year loan at that time. So again, just a suggestion to help a few folks with that, that ends my comments. Okay, was there one more?
Uh, yeah, I do have one now that.
Please.
It's okay with. Um, so, um, on the loan forgiveness portion, I do have a question. Is it, um, possible to add as well graduation, graduating from a trade school besides in addition to four-year university?
I could, I could answer, answer that. If that's the will of the commission, uh, then, then obviously you can make that amendment to the, uh, to today's, to today's item. That's an, that is an easier, relative to the interest rate lock, that is an easier one to, uh, to, uh, make today, if that makes sense.
Uh, yes, um, so I would like to make an amendment, um, to that, um, portion um, of the staff recommendation to add, um, graduated from a trade school as well. Or to a trade school, from a trade school.
Uh, I think that's an excellent, uh, amendment. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. So with that, I guess we can move forward there, Judson. Do we have a motion to approve the amended item number two? To authorize issuance of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, request for proposals for affordable homeownership opportunities to approve an update to the Down Payment Assistance Program guidelines and to allocate additional funds to down payment assistance.
So moved.
Second.
Very second, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Manner's approved by unanimous consent. And will that, you know what, I should have asked this ahead of time. We've already done the vote. But since we have some guests here today, are there any comments that you would like to make? We're doing this backwards, but I thought I'd open it up anyway.
Um, good evening. It's, I'm very happy to be here and really in support of, um, what you are passing this afternoon or voting on. I'm Velma Delarosa. I am the Vice President of Housing Development for Habitat for Humanity. And so we appreciate very much the longstanding partnership we have with the city. At this time, we have done about thirty-two homes for homeownership. We have a few more in the pipeline. So I would say by the end of the year, we'll be at forty. And we truly believe that homeownership is the economic catalyst for many, many families. Uh, it does the wealth creation, everything that Saulo said this afternoon. And so it brings stability to your communities. Um, more students go to college when they come from homes where parents are homeowners. There's just a trickle effect with the benefits of homeownership for families. And I believe, we believe that having lower income, moderate income families transition into homeownership, that is one family that is less likely to ever go or have to be in fear of, of homelessness. So, um, I'm very happy at, to see the presentation. I'm very happy at, um, the motion and it passing this afternoon. And we look forward to applying for it and hopefully, um, be considered and have a greater impact by making more homes available to working families. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and please keep, uh, doing the good work that Habitat has known to do so. And one of these days, maybe the Commissioners and I will help, uh, meet you at one of the new builds and, and help out a little bit.
If you have time this weekend, we actually have a dedication for two homes in the French colony, um, that are beautiful. One is a two-story Victorian and one is a one-story craftsman home. And, um, I think it's life-changing for the families, but, um, I think it's uplifting that community too and having an effect on, on the neighbors and the residents. Um, and lastly, we couldn't do this with partners like you. So thank you for your continued support.
Absolutely. Bianca, if you could please make sure the Commissioners get an email on that. I'm gonna do my best to try and attend. I'd love to see that.
And Mr. Chairman, they, they, uh, Habitat did, uh, did email that invitation out to all of the Commissioners and, uh, City Council and Planning Commission.
I did not see it. So if you could refresh that, I get about five hundred emails a day. So please refresh that for us. That'd be helpful. All right, thank you. Did the gentleman in the back want to make any comments?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Brian Hendricks with Majest Realty. I've been, uh, fortunate to do and be involved with a lot of rental affordable projects in the city. And, uh, this is sort of new, doing the homeownerships, a little more, has some a little more complexities. In some ways it's more simple, but in a lot of ways in the, how the funding works, it's complex, but excited to hopefully also be involved, um, with this RFP and what, what could maybe come out of it as far as, uh, for sale, uh, homeownership. I do have a question, is a question? Except I'm curious, does the down payment assistance, um, is, can be like a, is it project-based down payment assistance that can be tied to the RFP? Awards or they complete two separately, complete the programs? And with that, that's my question. But I'd say thank you Commissioners for supporting this and, uh, I look forward to seeing where, where it leads.
Thank you. Can we get a quick answer to his question?
Yes, sir, of course. Yeah, the, uh, we do have them separate, uh, that the, uh, the RFP is, uh, is designated for new affordable homeownership opportunities and the down payment assistance program investment is specific for our down payment assistance program. Now, uh, um, we're, uh, optimistic that that is going to work effectively. Uh, but if, um, if there's a, if there's an amendment needed, uh, midway through the year so that we can finance the best opportunity possible, then, then, then obviously, uh, we're going to do what's best for, for the residents and for the city.
Very good. Thank you. With that, let's go back to where I was going to go. Staff member comments, back to you, Judson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so, uh, just a couple, uh, couple thoughts here. Thank you so much to the commission for your approval today of the, uh, the RFP and the update to our down payment assistance program. Uh, as we mentioned, it is ten million dollars that we're making, investing in homeowner, affordable homeownership opportunities today. And we are very, uh, optimistic and hopeful that we can, we'll build, assist over fifty new families with affordable homeownership opportunities. Um, last week, our Housing Division had the, uh, privilege to be recognized by our city council, our mayor and city council. And, uh, the, uh, tremendous privilege. It was the first time in at least over ten years that our, that our, uh, that our Housing Division was recognized and, uh, really appreciate Mayor Pro Tem Lopez for recognizing us. And, uh, we were, um, we were all there and excited to be, uh, to be, uh, recognized by city council. As Velma mentioned with Habitat for Humanity, the dedication day for the Lacy and Vance, uh, project is this Saturday at ten AM. Uh, I, uh, um, will check on, uh, to make sure that everybody did receive their invitations. Um, and, uh, the, uh, the event starts at ten AM. Uh, and this project dates back to two thousand eighteen. I think it came before the commission back in December, two thousand eighteen or so, uh, before being approved by city council. And it was made possible through an award of funds by the commission of over five hundred thousand dollars. And of course, it's also being developed on land that are, that are, is owned by our housing authority. So a very exciting project. Uh, two other things to note, um, congratulations to Mr. David Flores, our Senior Community Development Analyst for the submission of our caper today. Followed the approval by our commission last, uh, um, last, uh, month. And, uh, Mr. Flores will also bring, be bringing forward our, um, CDBG nonprofit application uh, to the commission here soon and, uh, look forward to, um, your support on that. And, uh, with that, um, do we have any additional comments? Just add Catherine Neal, uh, presented to today at the, uh, at our HUD field office on our family self-sufficiency program. So congrats, uh, to Catherine there as well. And, uh, so, uh, thank you so much to our team and, uh, for, for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Judson. Okay. Well, now I'm going to open it up to the commission for their comments, starting with Commissioner Cornelius.
Nothing. I got the email and I'll be at the vacation ceremony on West Street. So.
Commissioner Guy Eagles.
Uh, yes, um, so just wanted to double back on what we voted on just now. Um, this is really momentous. I want to thank the, um, staff for all your hard work in getting this put together. I'm really looking forward to seeing this move on to the city council and approve. This is going to provide an opportunity for so many Santa Ana residents. I, I remember about eight years ago, um, we nearly moved out of Santa Ana because we couldn't afford it here. We wanted a bigger place. Um, in the end, we decided to stay patient, stay where we were at, and eventually did get a bigger place about seven or six years later. Um, there now and glad to stay in the city, but there are many people where they're forced into that hard decision to move elsewhere. This is going to give that opportunity to many families to stay where they grew up, to have that, um, that sense of community and great job, um, great job in coming up with this, great job with everything you've done. And I look forward to seeing many families have that, um, multi-generational stability.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Plus I want to say, um, thank you to staff and the city partner for your hard work. And I totally, as I'm immigrant myself, I totally understand how important homeownership is. And that's how our family go through the whole process. And I want to say thank you for expand that opportunity for more family. So.
Thank you. And then my thank you to staff as well. As Judson said, this was a very important presentation today. To see the work and the benefit of what ten million is going to do for fifty-two families approximately is absolutely priceless when you look at the general, I shouldn't say general, but generational wealth benefits of their future. So I'm proud to be part of this. Claudio, kudos to you, man. That was a great amendment. Wish I would have thought of it, but good job. Good, good job there. Um, I was at the mayor's meeting yesterday for neighborhood leaders and they talked about the public intoxication, I can't say that word, public intoxication initiative. And it's something that I wanted to talk about here just for a minute. They're really asking for our help. The police department needs our help. And we've all seen way too many people under the influence, laying on sidewalks, sleeping in the parks, you know, in the wrong places, hanging out at shopping centers. And they want to take the approach that they want to be notified, but the notification will be to go out there and offer their assistance. I think a little bit more nowadays. They had a young lady speak yesterday that really impressed the heck out of me. She had been homeless for many years. She had been in and out of, of jail and prison, off and on for ten years. She had lost custody of her child. She had hit rock bottom and a police officer approached her once. I guess somebody called it in and approached her and said, please let me help you. And something inside of her said, let's do this. Well, she's getting ready to graduate from a four-year university. Uh, she's already taken her LSAT. She's going to become an attorney to go forward and help people that, that need help. So you never know where some of these homeless people have come from. And it's something that we need to embrace the attitude and approach of, let's call it in. Let's see if we can, you know, get these guys some help. Let's see if we can make a difference. So it's, it's a program that was tossed around back and forth with the city council there not long ago. But the, the, the initiative was a passed. The police officers are now enforcing it and we're starting to make a difference, which I think will have a huge benefit across the city for, for all of us here. Um, the student leadership position on this commission and the senior tenant position is still open there. Judson, any new news on that?
We've got, it's a, a great update on the, uh, student, uh, commissioner, Bianca?
Uh, yes, uh, the regarding the student commissioner, um, I reached out to the clerk's office and, uh, we will be presenting it, um, at the commission level to appoint the student. She already, um, reached out to us. And so the next meeting, we'll be appointing her.
Very good.
As the tenant, we're trying to get some names and so people that, um, from the housing apply for those positions, but um, we're still waiting.
It's, it's tough. It's tough. Love to fill that position. I was in a leadership class once, um, with Pew. And they gave the examples of the, I forgot the name of the Indian tribe in Colorado. We were there for a retreat. And they called it basically, I, I think it's a Hogan, but that's where the chief would have six advisors. When they can see above, when they can see before him, behind him, to the sides. And with the collective opinion, they could make their decisions. So I'd love to appreciate the, the opinions of the student leadership, of the senior tenant position. I think would just help us be a better commission. So love to see that filled. With that, our next meeting will be on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. I will be, Judson and Bianca, I'll be out of town that day. So Commissioner Padilla will be leading the, I wanted to tell her today, but if you can pass it on, let her know. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.